I'd like to start the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can you please take rook off?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Okay, tonight is a special City Council meeting, and I also added an extra resolution to the agenda, which would be 11B. At this time, I need to call for agenda approval. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve the Order of Business May 9, 2019. This is a special meeting, Dearborn Heights City Council, with the addition of 11B.
Scored.
Supported by Councilman Bazey. Is there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I don't know what this is. I don't know that we can vote to waive the attorney-client privilege. The correspondence I received from the city attorney, Gary Miyaki, certainly wasn't unsolicited. I understand that yourself and possibly some other people filed a lawsuit against the mayor without any authorization from this body, any vote. So I would object to this meeting. I would object to this being added to the agenda, something I just saw.
Well, the reason for the -- what you're referring to is a resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to waive the attorney-client privilege related to an email that was received by attorney Gary Miyaki on May 9, 2019, at 12:31 a.m. And it's only for that because there are several members that want to share it with their attorneys, and we're just covering ourselves because we can't legally share it for a second opinion from our attorneys unless we have this waiver.
Why would I want to waive?
Madam Chair.
Well, we can take it out in a vote.
Madam Chair, I've had a prior discussion with one of the members of this body and indicated that, yes, indeed, you could share it with your individual attorneys because it was specifically stated.
Okay, well, we just want to cover it, make sure it's public, so nobody can get in trouble later.
Oh, if you want to make sure it's public.
It's just one. So, okay. At this time, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
On agenda only.
On the agenda approval?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it wasn't the resolution yet. Okay.
No.
Got it? Okay, next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. You state your name, address, and you have two minutes.
Isn't it a resident who's getting paid for that?
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Miyaki, you are being paid for tonight, so you would be not a resident unless you're going to waive your right to be paid tonight?
I don't know where that would come from.
There's no such rule.
There is no such rule. Moreover, in terms of the -- I'll not charge for the two minutes in which I might be allowed to speak.
Yes, you will be allowed to speak two minutes, so no problem.
And if I need further time?
No, two minutes is it, tonight.
Obviously, Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street, Dearborn Heights Corporation Council. Yes, indeed, I did send you a very lengthy email to make sure that I meet my obligations as the Corporation Council to point out information that's extremely important with regard to what is happening. And I'm also here speaking with regard to this specific item. I have indicated previously, however, the item 11B, that I would have absolutely no objection, and I do not think that it would necessarily be inappropriate for you to speak to your own private attorneys about the information that I ended up providing this morning. But getting back over to 11A, I strongly recommend that you do not end up adopting 11A. In general, I think I've indicated previously that what is being sought in this situation would violate the City Charter in several ways. And I want to also specifically bring to note that there is an ongoing problem here with the idea of trying to delegate undelegatable or non-delegatable powers to the City Council Chair by virtue of these types of motions. And specifically, the language that the Council Chair is authorized by the City Council to act on its behalf in any other actions required or related to the implementation of this resolution, which is the resolution to authorize the law firm to file a complaint against the mayor, is not something that can end up being done, and it was specifically the reason why the prior lawsuit was dismissed. And a lot of these problems could end up being avoided if there wasn't some sort of rush to end up doing things without consulting with council, namely me, to end up making sure that they can end up being done appropriately. And in my view, this is unnecessary, and it's dangerous, and you're going to potentially end up causing very significant problems. So, okay, very good.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comment on agenda items? You have two minutes. State your name and address.
Good evening, Zuhair Abdalhaq, Dearborn Heights. I remember when we asked Mr. Miyaki a few weeks ago to give an opinion on the PEG money, if it can be used for salaries. He didn't give an opinion. He referred it to somebody else, which is in violation of his duties, that when he's asked by the City Council, he should, it said, the Charter, he shall give an opinion if that is related to business of the city, and he should give that opinion. He did not give that opinion. He referred it in violation of his duty, which is in the Charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment before we move on?
Hi, my name is Samantha Collins. I live on 23330 Annapolis Street. First thing is, I would like to know if, on the Facebook page and the city website, if we could get the City Charter on there for residents to access it.
Okay, this, at this point, is for items there on the agenda, but at the end, there is a number 14 that you can come up and speak, and you will get three minutes at that time, if you might.
Okay, well, this is also for the Charter, or not Charter, the 11A.
Okay.
I know as much as this is going to be disregarded, I still want you guys to hear this. I don't agree with the lawyer contract. I know that there needs to be an audit investigation, and I agree with that. I don't know why we need to pay $35,000 to hire a lawyer to hire an audit accountant. Like, why are taxpayers paying $35,000 for someone to be the middleman? Why was there no bids taken out on this lawyer contract is another thing I want to know? Like, normally, we place out bids for everything. Why was there no bids? I'm so sorry. There's been a couple of things about the Opens Meetings Act, and I want to know, like, when and how the agreement came for the contract, because the Michigan's Open Meetings Act, sorry. Phone calls, emails, and text messages violate Michigan's Open Meeting Act unless there are copies available to the public. I don't know if there are any copies made for people to be seen or be able to read it. And then, my other concern is, we are extremely worried about a lawyer contract during the middle of a flood crisis. Maybe we should have postponed this until after we got all of this done. I figured there might be something else better we could do with our time than worrying about a lawyer contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further public comment before we move on? Okay, at this time, we have, under ordinances and resolutions, Council Chairwoman Malinowski Maxwell and Council Pro Tem Bazey, a resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
To move the Council, City Council, to approve the resolution of the Dearborn Heights to authorize the law firm of Ottenworth, Toewell, and Shank, PLC to file a complaint for writ of mandamus against Mayor Puleco as outlined in 11A.
Okay, do I hear support?
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
Go ahead. Councilwoman Abdallah can speak first.
So, I'm going to tell you honestly, I'm very, very irritated with this, and I'm just going to say it straight up. It doesn't matter whether I'm for or against this contract, for or against this forensic audit. I was very, very upset that, as a councilperson, that I read this after our council meeting online on a social media that find out that we, as a body, are suing the mayor. Whether we decide to sue him or not sue him, that's a whole nother issue. But what I want to know is, and we're all here, who decided, on my behalf, because I have a vote, I'm a part of this body, to sue the mayor? And again, whether it's okay to sue him or not okay, that's a whole nother conversation. But I would like to know, and I'm asking straight up, cameras are on, who decided, on my behalf, to go do a lawsuit on behalf of the City Council, which I'm supposed to be represented? I was not talked to, I was not emailed, I was not referenced, I was not, I didn't have any conversation whatsoever about this. And I'm really, really upset that somebody on this council, and I don't care who it is, made a decision to go do a lawsuit on my behalf without my knowledge of it, and then to get residents to contact me because they see it on social media, "What's this thing with you guys suing the mayor? Why are you guys suing the mayor?" I have no idea about anything. I looked like an idiot not knowing this, and I'm really, really upset with who made that decision without my knowledge. And again, that has nothing to do with the forensic audit, for or against, suing them for or against. You did this without any authorization or conversation with me, and I'd like to know who. I'm asking a specific question, please. Can anybody answer that? Because somebody on this council made that decision. Are we all going to look straight here? Who made that decision? It was not me. Nobody had any conversation whatsoever with me. I don't know who else had a conversation, but somebody was having a conversation with somebody. Number two, I'd like to know. All kinds of stuff being put out there. This is our city that we live in. I don't know what is going on here. I mean, everybody's lost their mind, putting papers, putting, I'm sorry, information out there about missing and stolen money. It's absolutely crazy to make, to put words out there that say stolen or missing. Missing means somebody walked into City Hall, grabbed it, and walked out. There is no $1.4 million that's missing. I'm saying it here publicly. The money is there. Nobody has authorization to walk in, grab money, and walk out. So please, whoever's putting out that type of information's got to stop it because it's just absolutely false. And now, we have another lawsuit. And again, no discussion whatsoever. We know about this meeting yesterday. We found out we're going to meet today. Obviously, somebody somewhere has had conversations amongst each other, whether it's against the Open Meetings Act, for the Open Meetings Act, somebody's having conversations somewhere. So again, I will ask again publicly, I would like to know who authorized, on my behalf, to create a lawsuit, whether it's against the mayor, against the deputy, against anybody, I don't care. I want to know who decided, on my behalf, to create a lawsuit. Please, thank you. And please, somebody answer that. It is not the residents. This was on behalf of the City Council. So some councilpeople, they had conversation amongst each other, went and, I'm not, sir, if you don't mind, please.
Point of order.
It is out of order.
Had a conversation with the attorneys, went and filed this lawsuit, and continued with this lawsuit, and then went into court, and I, as a City Councilman, had no idea about it. So I'd like to ask again, who had this conversation? Who made that decision on my behalf? Please, thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like an answer to the same question, and, and the public should know that a lawsuit was filed, the first time in the history of the city, that a lawsuit purportedly, on behalf of the City Council, against the mayor, and writ of mandamus was filed and was dismissed because the City Council never, the City Council only acts by a vote.
Okay, let's.
There was never, never, let me finish, never any vote. So I would like to know who's going to pay the cost in attorney's fees for that failed lawsuit, and it's certainly not going to be the taxpayers of this city. You don't, you don't file, the city has a budget of like $50 million. You don't file a lawsuit in Circuit Court without authorization, then get it dismissed. Again, the issue is the spending of the PEG money. There's no allegation that any money was taken. The allegation is that the money was not spent on what it should have been spent on. But there's procedures, there's the City Charter, there's the Open Meetings Act. We've had attorneys come to this body and threaten to sue council members for defamation. This isn't, we shouldn't be getting personal. We shouldn't be trying to bully people. If, if, if there's an issue regarding the cable TV money, there's an audit that's been done, if the council, the majority of the council wants to hire other auditors, people who are licensed to do an audit, not a law firm, to conduct a second audit, I don't, none of the attorneys at the Ottenworth-Shank Law Firm are licensed to do audits. They're not CPAs. So this whole thing, the timing of this emergency meeting is improper, does not make sense. And again, I would like to know who's going to pay for the filing of the failed lawsuit, the attorney fees incurred, both on behalf of the members of the council who filed the lawsuit and on behalf of the city.
Thank you. I'm just going to make one statement. We need to clarify something. This was dismissed without prejudice, which means we are allowed to bring it back before the judge. She wanted us to do this mandamus. That is the judge ordering this, in order to continue with this.
That is not true.
That's just not true.
Excuse me, point of order.
That's not true.
Point of order.
Not true.
All right, Councilwoman Hicks, did you still have something to say?
I do. First of all, I don't have your answer, you know, speaking for you. You and I were on a talk show, radio talk show, and we talked about flooding resources and things like that, but it also came up, and maybe there was a separate conversation, but I will tell you, this is my opinion, okay? I don't believe anybody, and I could be incorrect, but in my behalf, saying there's money missing, that never, and I keep hearing these words, missing, and this, that, that's not the case. What we're saying is accounting practices, for example, I'll use Act 345, which is something that I worked on. No one was ever taking your health care away, never, never, never. It was about the money that we tax our residents under Act 345, which is the pension part of the plan, and the health care, it's all put in general fund, it cannot be there. There has to be a 115 trust fund, it's in our budget now. We have to talk a little bit more about that, that money, where it's going. That's all that was, okay? It's about how it should be done. So I think that's true for PEG. I just wanted to share that because that came up just now. Regarding Opens Meeting Act, Opens Meeting Act is when you have four or more council members, you have a quorum, you have to debate, discuss, deliberate, or decide, the four Ds, okay? Whether it's by email, phone conversations, or meetings outside public eye, that is when you violate Opens Meeting Act. With that being said, I will tell you that there's a candidate who FOIA'd us, and I turned everything I had, even though I didn't have to, because it's my private email, but I did, and there was nothing there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney. You confirmed.
Turned over things to me very promptly.
Yep. And there was nothing there. So I want you all to know that, because there's a lot of rumors going around, and that's not accurate. So let's stop spreading rumors, let's stick to the facts, okay? I think in this case, this is up for a vote, it needs to be voted on.
All right.
And then it can move forward, or it may not. But that is how it works. That is the legislative body's responsibility, okay? Policy procedures, let's stick to the facts, stop using the scare words, okay? No more, we're not going to do that, we already said that, no more fear. I'm sorry, I don't have an answer for you on the other question, Councilwoman Abdallah.
Neither does any other councilperson right now.
I'm just speaking for myself, and it's all I can do, sir.
I appreciate that.
At this point, I, is there any, Tom?
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to say something.
You had your Robert's Rules Boarders two times.
I spoke once.
Two questions.
No, I spoke once.
You had two questions.
I spoke once also.
Yeah, you did speak once.
Okay, then I'd like to have my answers, then, if that's the case. I asked a question, I'd like to have the answer, who voted on my behalf to go sue? It's a very simple question. Go ahead, sir.
First of all, the council voted on hiring this law firm to represent the council in, what I understand, is finding a accounting firm to do the audit, because with these funds available, if I'm not mistaken, cannot be used to hire an accounting firm, but only for legal representation. And the council voted on that, and it was vetoed by the mayor and supervetoed by the council. And the mayor, these are all facts, refused, said he refused to sign it, and I don't know any other course of action to take. Do we keep supervetoing, vetoing, back and forth? I don't know. But the council did vote unanimously on this.
No, it wasn't unanimous.
It wasn't unanimous. It was majority, I'm sorry, majority.
Yes, superveto.
And I don't know whether reaction to take, I mean, if Mr. Miyaki can take, what other action can the council take to make the mayor sign this, that council approved?
Well, the council can end up doing a number of things, but in terms of taking an action, there are a couple of things that need to happen first. One of them is, is you had two motions. You had a motion with regard to the retention of the firm that didn't end up having anything in it in terms of an actual agreement. When I spoke to Mr. Shank on March 27, I said, "Is there going to be an agreement in addition to what you have here?" And he said, "I don't know, I'll have to talk to the client," which I still haven't been told who the client is supposed to be in this situation. He said I was engaging in banter by raising the issue of who the client was. But regardless, I spoke to him, and he said, well, I said, "Look, if there's going to end up being an agreement, Section 9.5 of the Charter requires that the mayor is to be able to review it before it gets submitted to the council." So he apparently sent that over to the council chair, the letter agreement, and then it ended up coming up for a vote. So what you really have in terms of a process at this point is there's been one override in terms of veto of the first motion. There should be an override of the second veto, and then at that point, there should end up being a motion that would end up being brought to authorize litigation at that juncture, okay? That's what should happen. I've had a discussion with someone with regard to this, and I've been more than willing to discuss it with anyone. I could end up advising you, and I am duty-bound to advise you, on how you could end up going about doing what you are hoping to achieve in terms of a financial review without potentially having to go through litigation. But as I think has been apparent, when I try to give advice, I'll even be gavelled out of order very forcefully. So I would be more than happy to discuss with this body how it could be done, but at this point, I think it would be premature to end up doing things. You need to override the second veto.
Thank you for your opinion.
And then go into the, and then have, then go into the type of motion that's on the table at this point.
Thank you for your opinion. Madam Chair, I do have a second point, but I think Councilman Constant was waiting. I'm sorry.
Not only, if, the Charter has specific provisions to how the city can hire city attorneys. Our Charter, for example, requires the city attorney to be a resident, and then any attorneys that are hired, we're hiring a law firm, not accountants, has to be hired through the city attorney. So that is one of the reasons why we can't be hiring this, this law firm. But number two, this would happen in every city. You'd have every city council in Flint, in Detroit, and in Oakmoss, wherever, filing, you know, the city, the mayor hires attorneys and sues the council, the council sues the city, and their, money would be wasted. The Charter provides, we're the legislative branch, any contract would have had to have first been sent to the mayor, the mayor would have had to review it, and then the city attorney would have had to approve the hiring of this law firm through the city attorney's office.
And if I could clarify?
All right, at this point.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
May I, for one minute, please? I like myself, I like with Councilman Wenzel. We voted on hiring a firm to find us a audit firm, okay? I don't know how, you know, if, if the mayor needs to have to see the contract, and then doesn't approve to send the contract back to us, then we're stuck, again. So how do you go about getting what we think is what's best interest of the residents? I'm torn between this, and I want to do the right thing. I want to do the right thing for the residents. I think the residents deserve to have everything out in the open, and right now, it's being kind of stopped, in a way. So that's my opinion, I'm with the opinion of Mr. Wenzel, that we did vote on it once, it was vetoed, we overridden veto, and it still wasn't done. So I don't know what else the council can do, other than what you had just said, so.
Thank you. All right, at this point.
If I may.
No, at this point, we're going to just, you've already said.
It's a problem. You need to listen to him, and we would not be in conference.
Excuse me, all right. At this point, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I'll be very quick. I mean, it's really, I'm so disappointed. I will tell you, I'm very disappointed. And I'm disappointed because we are elected by our residents to represent them. We are the stewards of taxpayers' dollars. This is what we're trying to do. This is why we're asking for friends to got it. We're trying to do it the right way. There was the superveto, you know, all this, but this is not the first time that something that was a resolution by this body adopted, which is a legislative act and binding, was ignored. And that includes, like, labeling the city vehicles. I mean, we're here, and that's still. And it would behoove us to work, work together and try to do this for our community. I mean, our residents, we owe it to them. That's why we're here. It's why government exists. So I am, I'm really disappointed because it really hurts us, it gives the city a black eye, it gives us all a black eye, every one of us, every one of us, every one of us. And it's so disappointing, and I don't know about you, Mr. Mayor, but we're all tired now, and we should just get it done and do what's right for our people. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
If I might, Madam Chair, I agree with the resident who came up. I mean, I'm, and most of us in the city are just very, very tired. We've gone through and are still going through a major flooding situation. I mean, I am exhausted and beat, and I had to spend Tuesday morning, the whole morning, in court while we were in the middle of the crisis and decisions need to be made. We're here tonight. There's nothing that required everything to stop. The water doesn't stop, hopefully it doesn't rain more tonight. One of the, there were two aspects to my vetoes and my complaints. One is, well, there's actually three, but one is the fact that Mr. Miyaki, on numerous occasions, told this council, "You are not following the rules, you're breaking the Charter." I cannot go along and break the Charter. You need to listen to him as he's providing you the course that is legal and not an illegal course. That's why I feel I will be very successful in the courts if you take me back in there. The second thing was, the fee that's being paid this firm, I think this firm, I've got to be careful how I criticize him, so I'm not, but you need to investigate this firm, and it's, it's not good. The third thing is that I thought it was politically motivated, and I still do, and that's why I have to oppose it. But, but I will not make frivolous vetoes, and I will not, I abide by the law. And when the Corporation Council, this Corporation Councils and previous Corporation Councils told me, as a council member, as a mayor, how to perform my duties and what not to do, I've always listened to them, and you should also.
Okay, at this point, I think we've all exhausted our questions.
No, we've not. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, we go by Robert's Rules of Order.
I know, but I asked a specific question. You guys had a lawsuit. I'd like to know who hired this firm to go do this lawsuit? And I asked a public question, nobody's answered me yet. I'd like to know, was it you? Was it Bill? Was it Ray? Was it Constant, Lisa? Who was it? I was not involved in this conversation. I would like to know who hired this firm and went and did the lawsuit. That's what I'm asking, it's a simple question. Why can't, what, are we going to hide things now? Or was there meetings behind our backs? There were some meetings that took place, otherwise, we would not be here today. There was a lawsuit, some meetings, conversations, emails, phone calls. No, 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 no. I'm upset with this. You can knock it all you want, I'm upset, okay? I'll speak in normal, I'm sorry, I'm fasting, I'm very upset.
I understand.
All I'm asking, very simple question, there was a lawsuit, we were here Tuesday night for a meeting. Nobody mentioned nothing. I just happened to go, people start calling me, I go on social media and find out we had a lawsuit that morning. I didn't know anything about it. Somebody here knows something about it. All I'm asking is, why is there meetings behind closed doors? That's all I'm asking. This is not about whether we sue or not, that's a decision we vote on. We voted 5 to 2 to hire that firm. I respect that. We go, we go forward with that, no problem. All I'm asking is, where were those meetings taking place? Who agreed, and I had nothing to do with it or knowledge of it? And that's wrong. And that's wrong. And so far, not one of you guys has stepped forward. That's not right.
I did not. I'll step up.
No, I'm staying step forward by saying I did, knew, or didn't know.
Put my hand on a Bible right now, there were no meetings.
All right, all right, at this point, let's just, okay, we have the resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council-
You would choose me by your meaning.
Point of order, at this point, we're just gonna vote. Resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to authorize the law firm of Ottenwest, Tewil, and Schenk P.L.C. to file a complaint for writ of mandamus against Mayor Puleco. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
The noes, let's take a poll. Councilman Muscat?
I'd like to abstain.
Councilman Coniston?
No.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
I say yes. Councilman?
No.
Abdullah?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Okay, the motion, the resolution passes. Okay, next item on the agenda we have is introduced by Council Chairwoman Malinowski Maxwell and Council Proton Bazey. This is a resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council to waive the attorney-client privilege related to the emailed opinion from Attorney Gary Miyake on May 9, 2019 at 12:31 a.m. The main reason for this is so some city council members can share this with their attorneys because of the fact that it said it had an attorney-client privilege, and Gary, I mean, Mr. Miyake's already said he's okay with it, but we just want to put it on the record, so we, we're covered. Is there any discussion regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Again, I, this isn't needed, this, I was just handed this, it's not properly even on the agenda. The lawsuit's been dismissed. I hope the public knows that it was dismissed because there was no proper standing, so there is no lawsuit. But this is not even properly before the council, and it's not necessary.
According to the Charter, if we have seven council members here, we are allowed to walk it onto the agenda before the meeting started, and I did that exactly. I covered my bases, I do my homework, and I made sure I did it correctly. And this is just merely to clear it for other council members. I mean, if you have no reason to share it, that's fine, but there are certain ones that do. So it's just to make it easier.
Well, Council Chair, if I may. I indicated that I don't have a problem with you sharing this thing with your individual attorneys. I think that's thoroughly appropriate. The issue, however, here about, there's also something here about a response from the Ottenwest, Tewil, and Schenk P.L.C. law firm, and that I consider to be problematic based on, again, the Charter. They haven't ended up being appropriately retained, they, we don't even know who their client is supposed to be. And this council chair is a very serious problem. Someone is going to get grieved for basically misrepresenting what their authority is. I'm gonna make this very clear, and someone is gonna potentially get prosecuted for assuming-
Are you threatening, or any council members, are you threatening us?
When I said grieved, you're not an attorney.
Yes.
All right?
Okay.
At least as far as I know, you're not an attorney.
But you're threatening somebody.
People who basically end up being in a position, I'm advising and I'm warning that people have to understand that if they end up doing things that misrepresent their authority, if they are representing, for example, one member of the council, but purporting to represent the entire council-
We, at this point, are just-
That is thoroughly inappropriate.
This is, that's not appropriate for what we got in front of us now. This is just a resolution to waive the attorney-client privilege related to an email, and that's it. So we're getting a little off-base here.
So, so we could-
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'm sorry.
So my question for our attorney, I know you've verbally told us it's okay to share it with our attorneys. I would be more comfortable having it in writing, just as a standard practice. And because this is now on agenda, I don't know if we can-
I'm gonna entertain it here.
Either you can vote on it, did you already take a motion? I don't know if you did, but-
Yes, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, I would like it in writing.
I would be more than willing to send each one of you an individual email indicating that you may share this with your personal attorney.
Okay.
And just as long as they understand that it's still a subject to attorney-client privilege. If the council body wants to waive attorney-client privilege in general, I would be more than happy for this information to end up being shared, but it would not be something that I would advise you to do.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I need someone to support this. Supported by Councilman Bazey, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Wenzel. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Okay, again, on this, again, city attorney Gary Miyake has pinned on various matters that, in the view of the majority of the city council. So who's the majority of the city council? Again, I didn't have this conversation, again, all over again, same thing as the last one.
Who's gonna vote for it?
Well, whoever votes for it will gladly be. Whoever votes for it will be the majority.
So you're guessing it's the majority, then? Okay, I'll go with that. Second question is, this says here that we can speak with Ottenwest, Tewil, and Schenk. You're saying earlier that it was with your own attorney, so I just want to make sure clarification.
No.
We could share this with any attorney, or are we going only with that particular firm?
No, we can share it with anybody that we choose personally.
But that's not what this says. It says that the city council requests that the city council chair share the email from Mr. Miyake with the law firm of Ottenwest, Tewil, and Schenk. So it's not any attorney, it's that specific attorney.
Okay, you know what, we can add that it would be any attorney that we choose. I would have no problem adjusting that to any, you know, to anyone that we choose. Anyone that council members choose. Okay.
So we have to, it's a motion on the floor.
So, okay, I'm going to-
The motion's being amended.
We gotta amend it to say that council members can share it with anyone that we individually choose to, not necessarily this one.
Are we speaking of this exact email, just to be clear?
Just the one email. Just, no, it's not all of them, because the other ones are-
Is that provided for in this resolution?
They do have the attorney, huh?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, that's provided for verbally, I mean, written form, that it's only pertaining to the email, I imagine it is.
That's what it says on top of the email.
Yes, that's the 5-9 for today, thank you.
To clarify, does that mean the entire email string? Because I did include that.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, does this, does this say that we can share it with any attorney or anybody?
Whoever you choose to share it with, if you're, you just-
I think it should be attorney, in my opinion only.
No, it's gonna be with anyone.
Anybody.
I just changed it to anyone, because I'm not gonna debate it here, too. Because I don't know what people-
I know.
Okay, counsel, you've supported it?
I support that.
And Wenzel, you still second it?
You didn't motion, didn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Abstain.
Councilman Coniston is no, and Councilman Muscat abstains, the rest are in favor. Resolution passes. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to comments from council members at the table. We just be advised that we do have a planning commission meeting coming in here in 20 minutes, so if we've got anything to say, keep it short.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Again, to echo what Councilman Abdullah has said, I'd like to know who, number one, why this law firm was even picked out to do an audit. Number two, who met with them and, these lawyers will be sanctioned for filing a complaint without any authorization, but mainly, who's gonna pay for that? The city of Dearborn Heights, the taxpayers aren't, for the failed lawsuit. The lawsuit was filed, a motion for writ of mandamus was filed, and then a motion was filed for earlier hearing date. At the motion hearing for the earlier hearing date, the judge dismissed the lawsuit because it wasn't properly bought. So who's gonna pay for that? Not certainly the city of Dearborn Heights, because it wasn't authored by the city council. And that bill's gonna be at least $7,000, $8,000, the filing fees, the attorney time, they had a couple lawyers down there. Who's gonna pay for that? This is, this is an egregious waste of taxpayers' money. For certain council members to go out and try to file a lawsuit, never done in the history of the city, with this law firm, Mr. Schenk was here, and I would agree with what somebody else said about the history of this particular law firm, and the fact that they're not licensed to do audits, but the city's not gonna be charged and paid for this.
Thank you, councilman. Any other comments? Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
And this is comments, you're under 14A, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good, I wanna make sure. So, I don't see Mrs. Collins, but I did want to respond and share something. We had a budget hearing, we talked a little bit about the flooding and some of the things, quite devastation to our community. And we certainly all know what the problem is, the tributary factors. We know what the answer is through the Army Corps of Engineers proposal that has passed independent and peer review, and is with congressional appropriations. We encourage people to call, write. We have our two congresswomen, Debbie Dingell and Rashida Talib, who are very supportive. But I wanted to take a quick note here and thank several people, because as a community, I see this go around, we really came together. I thank the city employees, including police and fire, DPW libraries, everyone who went and canvassed and did assessment of the damage going home to home and talking to the residents. Thank you to our firefighters, I believe police possibly as well, with helping people get things out of their basements, you know, carrying those up. Thank you, that's above and beyond the call of duty, by the way. It shows your compassion, I think, as leaders. We should lead with compassion. Thank you to the mayor and his people. Lee Gavin, I still want to call you chief, you organizing and working with Wayne County and other officials, bringing in the American Red Cross. Thank you to Salvation Army, who provided the emergency shelter, as well as HT Food Pantry, who's provided, right now, over 72 families have received food this week, and Services to Enhance Potential, STEP, has provided clothing vouchers, so families who lost clothing and everything, they can get those items hopefully replaced. So one thing I want to say is, it's very difficult, but praise God, I will say that here. If you want to judge me, you can, but no one, I hope, was hurt. And as a community, we will heal and we'll move forward.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council table? At this time, we open it up to public, I'm, to announcements in our community, and I don't think we're gonna have anything tonight. I can open, I'll open up to public comment. Does anyone from the public want to come up and comment? You have three minutes, state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Gary Miyake, Corporation Council, Plainfield Street. You've received my email, and now it appears that my email is going to be shared with others. And I think it's gonna be very clear to people that what has taken place and what is continuing to take place here is extraordinarily disturbing. And I've indicated to you the potential sanctions that people are facing with respect to this stuff. Someone, assuming on behalf of the city council, the ability to act on behalf of the city council, not as a body, is completely inconsistent with the law, and it's completely inconsistent with the Charter, and it's completely inconsistent with what Judge Hughes ruled. And people going along with that and sanctioning that is something that is potentially going to get people into very serious problems. And I've outlined what those problems could end up being and what those liabilities could end up being. And I think that it's very, very striking, and this is getting back to the issue. Mr. Schenk was never able to tell me who his client was, and I requested that information, he said I was engaging in banter. The fact that someone is supposed to be potentially representing a council body and does not have communications with every member of that body is completely inconsistent with what one is supposed to do if they are representing a body. And the fact is, is that when someone ends up being in a position where they're acting in this fashion, and we still don't know who authorized the actual bringing of a lawsuit in this particular matter against the mayor, which the court had ruled was unauthorized and violated the city Charter.
Point of order, let's listen to the speaker, please. No discussion by council members.
You do it all the time with Council Miyake, and it's a whisper, it's not disrupting anybody.
That is not true. You two talk all the time.
Okay.
Listen to what he has to say.
Okay, point of order, let's let Mr.-
But I think basically what you need to do is make sure, Councilman Abdullah asked a question, and it's a valid question, and it's a very problematic question if it is not answered. Who is it who's supposed to be the client who authorized the lawsuit against the mayor in the first place? And if that it question isn't answered, it's gonna end up having to be answered by other authorities that are higher than this body.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments at this time?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Council Chair.
Good evening.
I just want to wish everybody Happy Ramadan for the Muslims in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I just want to share that we're all praying for the victims of the flooding. This is not a Dearborn Heights problem, it's a community problem. Other cities have had floods as well. Ours, maybe we took the worst or the worst of it. So our prayers goes to all of these people. Thank you, Mayor, for all your hard work, and the councils that did participate in that. I still have a few seconds, I want to elaborate a little bit on what Councilman Abdullah said. I think it's very important for transparency and for somebody to have the courage to say, "I sued the mayor on behalf of city council." Again, this is not about whether you can or you cannot, it's just, let's just put it out in the open. This is a public hearing, people have the right to know. I always called in my office quite a few times, asking who did it and why. I did reach out to some council people that had no idea that they had voted to sue the mayor. If that's the case, at least send us an email, let us know, so we can answer people appropriately. I think somebody in the public today should answer that question without dodging it, and people who have the courage will step up and say it. Thank you very much, Happy Ramadan, and have a great evening, great weekend to the city's employees.
Thank you. Any further public comments? You have three minutes, state your name and address, please.
Zahir Abdul Ha, 354 Rosemary, Dearborn Heights. I want to thank the mayor for his hard work while he was sitting at Panera next day of the flood, drinking coffee and reading his newspaper at 6:30 when I walked in, while our police department and our volunteers are in the water pulling people he's sitting reading his newspaper at Panera. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke before, people talking about the meetings. Let's talk about the meetings at Lee Gavin's house, who was there after the meetings, carrying boxes of documents to his house. Let's talk about that. If you can tell us, Mr. Abdullah, who was at that meeting?
I don't know. I have no idea.
You don't know? Okay. Anyway-
Do me a favor, don't insinuate stuff, so especially about me.
No, I'm not insinuating, you were there.
I was at Lee Gavin's house? I don't even know where he lives.
Okay.
So please, don't, don't, don't say non-factual stuff.
We'll find out.
I don't even know where he lives.
I know my facts, I know where he lives.
Good for you, but I don't know where he lives.
Okay, good. Anyway, if you look at the budget and the reason for this forensic audit, there was money, I never said it's missing from the bag, I said it's misused, and the mayor admitted that it was misused.
I did not.
You did use it for-
Like the figure else you were saying today, but I'm not giving a debate.
Okay, point of order, point of order. Let the-
It was used in the general fund, not for the purpose which intended for. There is $2.2 million was added on the retiree healthcare system as administration fees. I went through the numbers for almost 15 years. There is $2.2 million overcharged to the residents. There is $2.991 million in the general ledger, I foiled December 2018, the general ledger for Act 345. And I foiled it again in February. There is insertion of $2.99 million from 2011 up to 2018. How could we go and insert $2.911 million into general ledger after seven, eight years? I wish the city council members who are opposing and fearing of millions of dollars spent on the audit, where they never told me how they came up with the one or two million dollars, I have no idea. How they didn't have the time to go and read what's going on, see what's the budget, what happened, what's misused. It's enough, it's enough what's going on in the city. I don't see why the mayor is afraid of this. Let's sit with the city council and narrow it as much as we can, the cheapest as we can, and let the resident know what's going on.
Thank you. Time's up. Okay, any other comment at this time? Do I hear somebody motion to, move to adjourn? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.